I've said, what if we just reduce that person by one day? We still have that person available for four days. So you'll see there is a reduction there. Furlough days, these would require a memorandum of understanding, an MOU is what it's called. And what we were talking about is the possibility, we currently have 182 student days. If we were to reduce by law, we have to have students in school for 180 days. If we were to reduce to 180, everyone is required to take an unpaid day or two days. That's the approximate value that we would receive with rebranding those numbers again, is about $73,000 for the two days. So it's something we could legally do. Again, we'd have to get an agreement with the unions because everybody's in a contract for a certain number of days. We talked about fee for preschool. It's an option. There are a lot of districts that do charge. Number 49 on the list is a common schedule. We have two different start times. And so buses go out and do the middle school run, and then they go do the elementary run. If we were to put them closer to the elementary start time, some of our buses that use the high, that run high school kids out of town would be able to get back and do the elementary and middle school runs together. So we have pre-K through eight on the same bus. So all your children will be on the same bus. It might reduce the amount of buses that we need to have out there. So we've anticipated a two-bus reduction. I hate to even say it with all the adventures that we've had with transportation, but it's something that we could do. And it seems that it would save several teachers if we did that. The list below are several things that I've received. Teachers, teachers have emailed me, parents have emailed. You know, board members continue to come up with ideas. So the list here with no dollar amount next to it are lists of things that people have suggested. Collapsing transportation, so kids might have to walk farther to the bus. Pay-to-play, designate only one high school. It might save us on transportation legally. We've got contracts. We're still reviewing those. You know, reducing energy, saving energy, saving lights, saving AC. Some of those things, the number of trash can bags that we use. Charging for building use, stopping the online assessment was a suggestion. Right now, we're in a contract, but it's something we could consider as we move forward into next year. Someone else suggested pre-K four days a week. Those other income-generating ideas. You know, are there other things that we can do? Corporate sponsorship, again, there's some legalities there, but these are all ideas that people came up with. Reducing heat, substitutes to cover PPT meetings rather than teacher coverage, and then potentially hiring a grant writer. So that's the list of potential, everybody's ideas, everything on the table kind of situation. I do have a list of probably suggestions that are more palatable to the whole community as a result of the towns.
It's three o'clock. I just want to officially start the meeting. Thank you for being here, Grandpa. That's all right. I understand. It's a last minute. We're trying, everybody's trying to get here. Hattie just went over, she has a new list, presided with 63 items. So just going over, there's some additions to what we had been presented on Wednesday, just with some updates on numbers and then obviously some additional costs.
So as I talked about, I think that we have some more palatable ideas that, so we can just kind of pass them around. If people have enough, if not, people can take some more copies for us. So again, to get us started, I wanted to see if there was some way we could get to that magic number. So I'm going to tell you that that number is around 300,000 to 2,000. So we went from this $800,000 to $900,000 number down to about 350,000. Part of that, again, comes from the potential of money that would be offset by the town. We actually found two more, a little bit, about 10,000 or so in staff changes that had not been accounted for and $7,000 in insurance. So I can tell you that the staff over in my office are working questions nonstop because we just keep looking at this over and over. So I'm going to just go ahead and jump in. So you can see on this spreadsheet, one through five, are cost savings that were already discussed, have been discussed for a few months. You know, so who's, where were their potential savings? In staff changes, in insurance changes, other reductions. So no more textbooks, no additional library books. What if we froze all of that stuff? And we have been frozen since September 1st. Our spending had been just essentials. So we just don't have that much money sitting around in textbooks that we can throw back 200,000. But those are the positive numbers. And then you can see number six through, let's see, six through 12, were numbers that our own budget is going to fall, have a shortfall. So we've got some shortfalls. And so this is all in that 360 number, 360,000 number. So then you can see some reductions to the grant funds, number 13, 14, 15. Those are reductions that were taken. We get state grants. Those were already reductions. The state is allowed to do that. They can take a certain percentage off the top before they pass that through to us, which they have. And that's federal funds. And then number 16, the state funding reduction. So this is the, this is the big number. Plus, if the town of Brooklyn is able to realize 100,000, plus if the town of Brooklyn is able to use some of their uncommitted reserves to offset this deficit. This is a one-shot thing. It's not something that's going to happen more than once. Because it can't happen. You can only spend it once. It's not going to just replenish. So we understand that. So I'm going to just start from, no, they're not on leverage. But these are my recommendations. The early retirement, we would have a savings with that reduction to tech ed. We have a specialized teacher that would be retiring as well. So there's a $55,000 savings. We would reduce the custodian. I hope we're in early retirement agreement, but we might not get that. So that would be $24,000. The common schedule, which is what I just talked about, saving two buses. I would recommend that. It's not a staff. Furlough days, again, it's an MOU. It's going to require us to get agreement with everybody in the district. I would hope for that, too. The pre-K schedule, I would say, I put that on there. It's $89,000. I did not put the, oh, no, that is the two buses, sorry. So if I extended the amount of time, so each, the preschools now are three hours. So if they went to two hours in 40 or 45 minutes, it would give us enough time in the middle of the day for those buses to be on a continual loop. They'd bring the kids home, they'd go out, pick the next kids up, they'd come back. It would also provide me some flexibility with scheduling. So teachers would have time for their planning and their lunch. So it may give us some offset in other. We can't answer questions now, but if you write it down, we'll answer them during, or we'll listen to your questions during public session. The Brooklyn Middle School para, we're working, we think we can do that as well. Health at Brooklyn Elementary School, you can see $37,000. That would be a teacher that would need to be reassigned. Oh, I just counted that twice. So we're going to cross tech ed off there. It's on there twice. Coda, which is the occupational therapy assistant, certified occupational therapist assistant. We talked about that reduction can be made. The assistant financial secretary, if we reduced her down to four days a week. The next side of this would be superintendent, my position, going down to four days a week. The Brooklyn Elementary School principal. So these are the administrative givebacks that we talked about today. I put them all on there. I put reducing to behaviorists. Pay out of sick time, that's coming in the wrong direction. So the payout of sick time is something that we would need to pay out. Those, that's the wrong direction, that number. Reducing the middle school principals down to three days a week instead of five days a week for this year only, I have a note there. I'd like to think that that's not something we have to stay with. And reducing a library media staff. I think that that teacher would be reassigned to teach computers at the middle school. In this, and then the bottom line, which is dark, I believe that we would need to lay off two teachers in this scenario. So that's kind of where we are right now. So that's the, that was the travel giveback. Just line here between someone else. So to calculate the bottom line, I need to add this 32, 786 for the sick time back in. And then take out tech ed, which becomes 47,000. So it puts us at, where it puts us at, negative $5,081. So what that means is, if we were to accept everything on this list, we then need to go back to this list and figure out where we find $5,081 to get to a zero. That's assuming there are no additional cuts by state, but at least we get this through this round. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Got to depend on my math.
So we need to find another 30,000.
Yeah. Man, Keith, the number is really a negative 37,867. Which means we have to go back to this list. Yeah. Assuming that you accept everything on that.
You have to take out the one you added and you get it off. Okay, that's what I thought.
867, 37, 867.
I am going to open public comments, but just in the essence of time and because of the NRC that were, are present, I would just like you to state your name for the board before you direct your comments to the Board of Ed, so that way we can get back to where the answers to your specific questions. We are not allowed to engage in the back-and-forth discussion with you. We answer your questions at the time, but we do value and will consider your input. And we are going to put a three-minute time limit on everyone today just so that we can allow as many people as possible to speak. Again, you're going to follow that just so that we can get everybody who would like to make a comment or have a question for us to hold that. And we hope that some of this workshop up to this point has answered some of the questions that you may have asked. So I will take public comment at this time.
My name is Jeffrey Otto. I'm on the Board of Finance in Brooklyn. I'd like to suggest that the board consider not reducing the superintendent's hours by one day a week. I think for the first time in several years, we have a strong leader who is working effectively, from my point of view, to bring several situations that need attention under control. And I don't think this is the time to back off on that one leadership.
Rick, I have some of the first selection. I'd also like to say that while the selectmen have not finalized their number, I think you could put 130, not 100. That's where we're focused right this time.
My name is Jessica Solis. I was just curious, are we required to provide busing for preschool? Is that something?
We can't answer that, but it's, but I think it explains it.
Anybody else have?
Just a question. Mine's Jason. You said, is there two question-and-answer sessions? That's what it looks like for the itinerary. So you're going to have another one?
We have two public comments.
Right.
Question and answer.
I apologize, two public comments.
I just want to make sure I raise it right.
Public comment. Because I want to see all information. Are you presenting your information?
We're in a discussion. It's just one of the time. We're trying to work through this. And if we're, I make no promises of what will or will not be. Anybody else have a comment?
Hey, Jay Karawak. I was wondering if the new positions that were added in the budget this previous time and were approved and then the board decided to hold off on filling those, if those remain unfilled, does that realize any savings? And have all of those made it into here? And my second, well, yeah, second. Since we're seeing other towns across the state, a couple of mine that have talked about eliminating the pre-K programs altogether. Now, if those aren't a state mandate, I'm unaware if they are or not. It would seem that that would have a huge reduction being staff, time, transportation, everything. And if we were, or if the board were to look into that, it seems that that would be an enormous reduction that other towns are looking into.
In the middle of October, apparently, I believe the teachers' union filed lawsuit against the board trying to block this. Anybody have an update on that? As to that progress?
It'll be a while.
So nobody knows.
It's been dropped. Wait.
It's been dropped.
Mr. Aska?
Okay, thank you.
Steve Aska, I work for the CDAT, filed a lawsuit. But because there is a unified budget, whether you like it or not, and the lawsuit has been dropped, it has no X.
Thank you, Mr. Aska. Any other public comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Eva Dislip, and I'd like to.
I'm sorry, I need to catch you again.
My name is Eva Dislip. I have $2 of pre-K. And I would say that I fully support dropping pre-K for three-year-olds because I think that's not, well, it would be great and not something that we can afford. I would oppose dropping the suggestion of dropping pre-K completely or charging because that will disproportionately affect lower-income children if parents can't afford to pay for pre-K. It will be really obvious that all children on a level playing field don't get the same burden.
My name is Art Gutierrez. I would like to know if the entire town will be informed of your decision prior to going ahead via town meeting? Or you will act with whatever steps are necessary to resolve this immediate budget situation here?
Anyone else? So I can go over a couple of things, because I think you're actually listing in our discussion. Pre-K is not a required program, although we are, we do have students that we do, are required to provide pre-K services for. So that would, that would not be allowed to be cut. I'm sorry, the school readiness?
So we do have a school readiness grant that we receive funding to offset the cost of our preschool program. We would need to include that in tax, or else we would jeopardize funding. We are allowed to charge for preschool, even with the school readiness grant. The school readiness grant is intended to support children who might be at risk of not receiving preschool. So there is a sliding fee schedule. Some of those fees might be as little as $5 a week for preschool, but could go up from there. But certainly, we want to, when I looked at the fee for preschool, you can see I did 21 weeks to school times 25 students. And we have many, many, many more than 25. So it was just a, just a little tiny bit of an offset. So we could certainly, the board request of the Off-Ceremony Childhood to start charging for our school readiness labs. We'd have to get permission to do that, since that's not the way it's set up right now. But there are other, there are only 24, I think, 28 students in the readiness. So the other students we could consider charging for, but you know, it's just, it's just a starting point. 28 students between AM and PM total.
The 28, shall we slash for school readiness?
24.
24. I'm just standing because my back hurts. Fine. And we are not required to provide transportation for pre-K students. So that is why that is listed as a possibility of a reduction in the expenditures. It is a possibility in there. As far as decisions are made, the Board of Ed is responsible for their own budget, whereas the town is responsible for their side of the budget. And unfortunately, in this case, we bear the lion's share of the budget at this point in time. The town and the Board of Finance can't specifically tell us what to do with our budget. So we have to control this. Does anybody have, from the board, any other suggestions, comments, points, recommendations?
Yes, I would like to ask, given the information that we were provided Wednesday night about high school tuition, that we go back to Killenly High School. All of our partners for high school tuition gave us budget increases that we should have anticipated for this year. All of them are on the mark. Killenly told us that we should budget $355 a student for an increase for tuition and billed us $1,237 a student. And that's 121 students. So I think we need to push back and push back hard on Killenly to say, this is unbudgeted. It's not what we planned for. You know, it was on their agenda for their meeting. When they had their meeting, their board meeting, Wednesday night, last Wednesday, the same night we had our meeting. I talked to someone on the board. Their understanding of that line item on their agenda was to talk about billing us based on last year's high school number. And this person was surprised to hear that we actually got billed $1,237 a student. So that's significant money. And I think that we need to just try and work something out with Steve Ruh. I will say, he did call today. I did not, was not able to take the call when he called. So I have not called him back. It's possible that he may, maybe ask him. And what happens if we don't pay? What happens if we say, you know, your tuition is out of line with every other place that we send our kids to? Plus, we pay capital costs for the new building for that school. And it's not in line, so if we don't pay it, then it's not what we signed up for. It's a lot of money.
And I just want to piggyback on that, too. I was thinking about the high school. And if that's how the billing is going to go and the cost of education there, one of the items was, should we look at a single designation? And that's probably one of the best reasons to do so. But we don't have any numbers on what that would save us or, you know, I know it's saying something on transportation, probably not. Scheduling would be a little easier. We know what the tuition is, so that would be easier to figure out. But we should maybe explore that a little further.
And as a Board of Education, we would like to. It's nice that Brooklyn has this opportunity where designated schools are Woodstock and Killenly. And then, of course, you know, we have Boag, and we have Ellis, and we have QMC, and we have other alternatives that are, you know, state-sponsored and less money. But you know, it's nice that we have choice here. But when you get to the point that the tuition increases are not palatable and unexplainable, I think that we have to.
And I also think.
Push back and play tough.
A single designation would eliminate the children going to many other schools. Because once you have one designated high school, that's where they go. We don't have to then pay tuition to all the other schools that children go to. That may or may not be a savings because some of them are less money. Well, we have Ellis. I'm talking about the other high school choices. MFA and Plainfield, and here's all the places where we have students go.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to ask why they aren't on here, or why they, or if they were considered, why not? There was a little bit on here about the assistant principals. And I was 100% for adding the principal at the elementary school. And I think it has made a difference. But as I've thought of it these last, you know, several days, we're potentially affecting a large population of elementary school kids moving from the class that they're accustomed to, splitting them up. I think then an overall impact, taking a class of 20 kids and now separating them out amongst three or four classrooms. That whole month of January now, we're going to be, we're going to be behind. We're going to be, they're going to have to learn the new routines of the, their new expectations. They're not the same in every class. And I think as a whole, it's not just going to affect that one classroom. It's going to affect every classroom. So I would like to put the full assistant principal on the list as a cut in lieu of, especially in lieu of cutting classroom teachers.
There are no classroom cuts on this list. So we're almost to the, we're almost at a zero, and there are no element.
No, do I have to do one? Okay, I was looking at this one. That was in our pile. A little bit of potential.
I know we have some cut to the behavioralist. But you mentioned that we had two new outplacements last year and five replacement issues. Is there any potential for bringing some of those students back? Maybe expanding the job of the behavioralist and bringing them back in? Especially if we're going to be, any classrooms will have additional space. And I know, I know you need similarity of students, but that's a huge overrun on specialized. If we could find a way to control that.
So it's a conversation that Amanda Brown, the specialized director, and I have had since we started, since in the summer. And at this time, we don't have a cohort that would make a good last. But it's certainly something that we keep looking at. And, and we, you know, we have some movement with our out-of-district, you know, in and out, and so I think in positive direction. So I totally understand what you're saying. And I know that Mrs. Brown continues to look at that as an option. Right now, it feels as though there's a bigger chunk of students that require specialized instruction at the high school level. There, obviously, we have some at the elementary level, but. Um, there, obviously we have some at the elementary level, but, um, at, at this point, it's not, we, we can't create a program yet. But we, we certainly will keep that in mind as well, you know, at any time.
And then I know there's no cuts to staff, but we were, it was on the list, um, potential music and art. Those are related, um, areas, not academic areas. They're not required either, are they?
That's correct. Music and art are not required.
Is there a way we could expand those areas into the classroom? I know classroom teachers are more proficient in art and music, but just to give some basic instruction. And then, um, I know it's teacher planning and prep time, but if we started doing what formerly does and maybe had every other Friday off as a half day, the teachers could use that for their planning and prep period. And, um, to keep our classes intact.
Well, I'm going to piggyback on that, what does that do to transportation? Because that budget transportation may be around.
So, um, so a couple, a couple of responses. One is art and music are not required. Um, part of what does happen, yes, it impacts our ability to provide planning for teachers. I think that some early release days would be good as far as professional development. Um, time for professional development to, um, review our curriculum and implement our curriculum and talk about instructional strategies, high yield strategies. But, um, if we were to do a reduced schedule on certain days, that, um, once that's our schedule, I don't think we'd have as much difficulty. We wouldn't have an additional charge with the bus if that's our regular schedule. So it's, um, so we could realize some of what you're saying, um.
Well, because we'd be asking the teachers to give up their planning preppers, which they do during the specials, so then we have to create.
Well, and I think that, um, you know, taking a two hour trunk like that twice a month, Killenly does twice a month. It doesn't really equate to their planning, their day-to-day planning and team. But I think it, we might be a loss at one planning period. If that's your, the week that we have an early release, we might feel offset like half an hour of that time, um, for planning. I, I don't know that we'd be able to count, you know, two hours for two hours. I don't, I don't think that would work. Um, but it's certainly something that we can, we can explore.
And then my only other thought was, why don't we go to M&amp;J and transportation and ask them for suggestions on savings? I know, I know, changing the times of the school, that would help. And going to a single, single high school myself. And then should we enforce the diesel must requirement?
Can we sell any of that oil? We, we may, um, they need to be able to sell off some of that. Because I do expect that we'll have some extra in this year.
I still say we go back to Killenly and give that 100 grand. Um, I also just want to make a comment. You know, this is a huge change from where we were at on Wednesday. And I think, I mean, Brooklyn as a town is very fortunate to have the working relationship that we have with our selectmen, you know, with our Board of Finance and with all of our townspeople. And this is what the town should do to come together to support. So I just want to thank Rick and the selectmen and Jeff for helping us through this. Um, I do think in January, we're going to be in this situation with more cuts. And I know the well is dry, so, um, the second and third page of reductions is very disturbing. I'd also like to thank the staff for all they have done. Giving up, uh, any increases in travel money or whatever else. Um, and the custodians and everyone just working together to try and get us where we need to be. No one likes doing this. Um, what's in the best interest of the students is what we want.
Have we looked at everything with trash removal, recycling? Putting those things out for bid? Are we, are we as low as it will be there?
I think that we fall under the town, um, removal, I think.
We used to, we've started to block the date on our own because we make
Trash.
Trash you do recycle is under the town.
Right, because we've made changes over the years when we get a better tool.
And then my other question was, what about efficiency? I mean, it may not, maybe late for this year, but efficiency with school supplies within future classrooms?
We do, um, participate in different consortiums. So there are some bids that we can get supplies from. So, um, but, but certainly will continue to look at that. I, um,
I would to share a service that was released on it. It looks like we buy quite a bit off of cooperative arrangement, whether it's cafeteria, furniture, supplies.
Does anybody else have any questions about? So we're looking at the one page, she did. I'm trying to make sure they're all on the same page.
I know, I would like to second Jeff I was commenting to. I think it's absolutely inappropriate to reduce our superintendent to four days a week. I think now is the time more than ever. We need, we need you. And I know you're working 24 hours a day, Saturdays and Sundays. So I know even if we reduced you, you'd continue to work. But your presence here is critical and we need you. So I think we take that well.
I have a comment that won't necessarily help us through this problem, but I rather suspect that there's going to be other shortfalls coming. Um, one of the reasons that special education is expensive is that the students above some certain levels of attention required have to be out by usually far away at very expensive facilities. I'm not so sure that it isn't possible for us to link up with nearby towns and put together regional special education facilities. We did in this district on autism programs for a few years, very successfully, significantly less cost than, uh, but we couldn't, in our small town, assure that we would always have four autistic students. But if we linked up, and I'm, I'm just talking. We linked up with Canterbury, Ponsett, maybe Killenly and Sterling and some of the other small towns, we increased the likelihood that we could keep a regional system that's just as effective and much less costly. So it's something to look into once you get over this.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, I will say that we, we, Amanda and I have had multiple conversations about this. I know that there's been a program here in the past. I've also done the same type of cost savings programs in other districts. So I do think it's a possibility and, and, but we have to get through this one first, what you said.
Patty, is there anything else that you wanted to talk about with this?
I, you know, I think that we're, um, Kathy, if, if we were to put in the, um, you know, the additional 30,000 that our special ed minutes has said that the town would be able to put forward, I think that if we, if we put everything on this page, um, made the two corrections, the tech ad and the, um, simply, um, in your So that new number. So right now, the, if we were to do as sort of the discussion has led us, the number is a negative 21,475. So if you were to, if we were to make motion to approve everything on this list minus the duplicate tech ad position, minus superintendent position, minus the six payout, payout of six times, and then change number 17, 130. Yeah, so, yeah. And change, um, the reduction to our current expenditure would be 298,646. Leaving us needing to come up with another 21,475. That would be a place that I would start right now. Um, I do have, I do have a couple of other thoughts that, um, you know, if we were to look at reducing midday preschool transportation unless required by IEP for students with disabilities, that would be one place I might look. I might look at the additional point two reduction to health PE at the middle school. Um, that might be a place that I would go.
What was the last one about?
Seventeen, number 17. So possibly number three, possibly number 17. Uh, you know, I might go look at some possible reduction to art. Um, you know, between the two schools. Uh, one of the things that I was speaking with the administrators today about is that if we were to have a shorter preschool day, we maybe don't send them out for specials and maybe, um, maybe offer them some art or PE, but the teacher come in for a shorter period of time into the classroom. Um, PE does have, or sorry, preschool does have, uh, an area that they could have, um, playtime every day, like a physical, um, movement, motor time during the day. Uh, again, it's not, not great.
Almost their whole day is art, party.
Yeah. So if we were to still offer the same number of preschool sections and not offer, let's say, art in each one of those sections, that's six sections of art that we can remove, potentially six sections of PE that we could remove from the teacher. Also six sections of music if we wanted to, you know. The problem is the way, once you start reducing people from a 1.0, one full-time equivalent to less than that, they start to look at other districts. You know, if there's a, if there's an art job down the road and it's a full-time job, they might take that one because, um, they're really looking work full-time, not part-time. Sometimes this works out for people, sometimes it doesn't. But that might be the direction that I would go at least for this next round in order to get to that, um, get that final 21,000.
So my question that, that I would say that I would pose to the board right now, um, for to you guys from the board is, if we were to vote and accept on the one page, do we need to determine the 21,000 is, is now as well? Or do we need to attempt to set another meeting shortly to make sure that you can, to give you time and, and the administrators time to evaluate this, to figure out from this jumping off point, what we need to do next?
I think, I think it would be reasonable to, um, to hold off on the last 21,000. It's still 21,000, but, um, but I certainly, you know, that number can change any day with, with students that move in or out. Um, I think it's a relatively safe number that I'll be watching daily. But I think it would be reasonable to make the reductions as, as suggested here, holding off on that last 21,000 dollars. And I'll come back to you when, you know, if, if nothing changes or if things change in the wrong direction, we'll create this sub 21,000. So I think to your point, I would agree.
Because at this point in time, the, um, what we have voted on, uh, in Wednesday, I'm sorry, um, was the, to be able to offer both the teacher union and the non-certified union, the possibility for early retirement incentive, but that does not close until Thursday. So, so technically we still have a couple of days that staff could take advantage of that and still have time to consider that, see if that is an option that they're willing to consider. So that potentially, it could not have any impact on this, but it also could. So we, so we might be able to adjust even more.
I have a question, I have a question on the early retirement piece. So have we, what is the feedback been on the offer there? I mean, I, I've heard that there are others considering it. It worked a little bit. I know you mentioned we're not quite there with the, the first two that have shown interest. But have we had any teachers come back to us and say, well, you know, if it was just this, I would, I mean, you know, that kind of thing.
So that's, so two of the teachers, so this, the initial package that was offered that we authorized and offered, um, was not really the right match right off the top. Um, so, uh, we're looking at, can we, um, adjust that to meet the needs in order to, um, get to this point? So, uh, the negotiations committee did authorize me to, you know, adjust the, the offer in order to maybe make it more palatable for, um, a couple of people. So that's, that's where we are and that's the two that I think that we may get early retirement for, which I'm kind of calculating in as a potential savings. Um, and then for the non-certified, um, they just got to see it today because that was kind of a little later coming. And so, um, I think we may need to adjust that as well. But, um, it's certainly worth adjusting if someone's close to retirement and it makes it worth it for them to not lay somebody off and to offer that retirement incentive. So that's, so we're looking at that. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't, I'm just throwing this out there. I don't know if it's something that we could do or not, or if it's feasible or not. But does it, does it make sense to say to the, to the teachers, that certified teachers, hey, if you're thinking about this, but it's not quite there, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow at, you know, 3:30, please come and tell us what your thoughts are? Is it, I mean?
Certainly worth it, it's certainly worth it. I, um, Kristen Schetzel is like BEA president and so, um,
Yeah, yeah.
Been communicating and so, but I, but I certainly can offer that and see if there's anybody. Most, uh, you know, I really have had a lot of teachers reach out to me on different things. Um, but, but I certainly will operate and see if there's any, um, other.
Yeah, and I realized you've had a lot of conversations that I don't, I don't know about.
It's worth it.
So it's already been done.
Yeah, that kind of meeting has often been good, so I certainly will do that.
And I think at this point, that if, if a teacher or a non-certified staff is, is right there and they think that, you know, it's just a little bit altering that they need to approach the superintendent. Because we're, we're not going to, we can't go fishing. Because this is, this is an incentive, it's not required in any leadership reform. And it's not good to be held against anybody at all if that is not the but if, if they feel that they're a little bit close, then I would suggest the staff approaches the superintendent directly and, or, you know, the, the presidents of the various unions and have those conversations. Um, and then that can represent the entire board and something that we need to decide on. Because unions have to be in agreement with, as well, if it's, because it's, because of the, the letter that was sent out, so they have to be kind of involved in the agreement as well.
I have a question. Just in terms of, um, finding a solution to the 21,000 dollar problem, um, the funding proposals that we made to reduce the deficit after, of course, being presented to and approved by a town meeting. And if these change, some or all of these changes are intended to go into place around the first of January, that these, that town meeting ought to take place in December. So, um, Christmas Eve isn't the right time for that.
Good.
So I'm just hoping that we have in our heads a timeline that would allow the board to finalize its recommendations, um, given the notice requirements for the town meeting. So we could have that town meeting sometime a week before Christmas. Yeah, we don't, we have some time, but we don't have another month.
I was going to go to the comment too. The, um, the sheet that we have, the worksheet that we have here, we're at 21,475. There's nothing in here, there's no reduction in here for the reduction of the two school days, right? Yeah.
It is.
That's the furlough day?
Yeah, furlough days too. So that would require, um, so you would approve it, but I still have to get approval.
Um, anything else?
I just, is the, the furlough days, I mean, the top, top of, of just doing the 180, the furlough days would bring us to that 180, that's the intent of that.
That would, that would be a minimal retirement. But we still have to provide transportation too. Right. This is just for our buses.
Right.
We're doing that. Just for our buses and our staff to check them.
Well, and depending on what Well, depending on what some of the high school schedule is, is what.
Mm-hmm. They could be using those in the February break, I don't know.
Right.
Well, that was, that was the, the other thing, you had talked about extending the February to a week. That would be using up those days that we were working on.
We only have two days off that week in February.
Right, but the original proposal, both things, that furlough plus, but they would be one and the same. Because if we eliminate student days.
Go below the requirement of the state and send it out. So the teachers' contract, um, has more days and so we still have, so if we furloughed two days, everyone would be out for two more days, students, teachers, parents, everybody. There are two more days between now and the end of June that are professional development days, where only the certified staff, so administrators and teachers come in on those two days. So potentially, um, if we furloughed, a-again, that's a significant hit.
Professional development days.
Right. I, I, I'm not sure that the teachers' union would say, yes, we want to give up four days of pay, because that's really what it comes down to.
Right, right.
So I, I think.
And that's why I looked at it as like they're ea- an option either or, either furlough days or we reduce the, increase that vacation.
You could, you could ask me to, you know, you could approve that, you could ask me to go get a vote, I would get a vote from the teachers and the, all the unions to see whether or not that would be, um, you know, an initiative, so. But I, I think it would be reasonable, kind of biggest bang is to, to drop the school year down to 180 days. I think the parent or someone that said to me who's done that in the past, so it's not the first time Brooklyn has experienced that, so, um, it's something that, that would be where it starts, it's the biggest.
Well, because the most bang for the buck is because you're adding transportation on top of the, the pay of, of regular, regular furlough. So versus a PD being furloughed.
Right.
Well, yeah, so, so the, the bigger bang for the buck is, is unfortunately the student days, because then there's fewer buses. Okay.
I just want to, can we just quickly go over the number changes, just to make sure I have everything right? So with the one change from 100 to 130, it makes us short 321,121 dollars?
We double counted and got that.
Cross that out to 47,001.
Cross that super extended.
Yeah.
And then sit time should be a negative, not a positive.
It should be a negative.
Yeah.
321,21, I think that's what I did, with 32,000 minus, I just took it off.
All right, if there is nothing else from the board, I am going to open it back up for public comment.
Yes, so with a very heavy heart, I make a motion that we approve these reductions to the Brooklyn School budget.
A second.
As presented with, uh, an additional $21,475 to still be found, hopefully, I'm telling you this.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
That goes forward. All right, Ian. All right, so I will open it up for public comment. I would just ask again, um, I know that we've had some new people from when we started. Um, we are trying to allow everyone to speak if they have, um, something to say, just ask that you state your name, um, as we're not having a back and forth conversation at this point in time, um, with the public comments, we can make sure that we get back to you if we don't answer the questions in the worksheet that we have done. And we ask that you leave your comments to three minutes so that if everybody in the room wants to say something, they can.
I'll start. I missed my seat, I gotta say, harder being quiet back here. Couple of comments, first, Mr. Gilpatty, thank you for acknowledging my email. I get back to me and appreciate that and all that stuff to be considered, but then all the effort that you're putting into this, very clear how much work you've done since the last meeting. A couple of things, just I want to really echo Joan Stacey, you know, calling, uh, to Killenley and, and pushing forward on that, I think that's gonna be very important, huge. I think this is an opportunity, I think, uh, to look at maybe, and what May was talking about, destining high school to start the discussions now, um, whether it's Woodstock, whomever it seems that they might be the most favorable, and maybe there's an opportunity to be sent all our school kids, school, all of our students to that school, uh, great because, uh, buying discount economy scale. Because that's four million dollars in our budget that we cannot touch right now. And then last thing, uh, on the bus reduction for common schedules, we want to look at back quitting and having a high school kid be picked up versus the buses going out to their houses. I don't know how many extra buses that may or may not save, but we did, that's what we did, I think that's the one, year or two ago.
And we, that's the bottom, um, I just want to say, as a taxpayer, as a educator, as all of, all of it, um, I just want to thank, um, Superintendent, the administration taking the hits on their, um, all of it, that this is what this town is about, that the students, the educators, that we're here for the kids and, you know, everybody rallying together and coming through and trying to figure out what, um, is best for the kids coming to Brooklyn and so.
My name is Jason, I have a four-year-old and three K. My son's six years old, he's in second grade. Uh, Mr. Travell, Mrs. Travell, pardon me, uh, to answer your question or to offer some insight, when you go to bargain with them, please remind Killenley that the product that they sell is quite inferior to Woodstock, so if they're charging a premium product, premium price, they need to give a premium product and if not, um, they're going against one of the best school systems in all of Eastern Connecticut, minus Eastline and whatever. Academically, you guys can check it out, you know I'm right. That being said, what I wish was presented was, let's talk about the elephant room, no one wants to talk about it, mill rate's gotta be increased. I know everyone hates to hear this, because I don't know if it's politics or whatever, and I voted for neither, mill rate's gonna have to be increased because the problem has not been addressed fully. 2017 to 2018 budget, if you take a look at it, it leaves a few hundred thousand more than what it already is. You cannot count on a two-term governor who's, you know, no, not Democratic Republican. You can't count on a two-term governor who's already decided he's bailing the state to give money, okay? You can't. The fact that he's cutting midterm, doing his midterm, mid fiscal year, really? So unfortunately, that's gonna be one of the things that's gonna arise. What I wish had been presented, because we noticed it was coming, was a presentation on the mill rate of, I think we're at 26.5 or 26.4, 27, right around there, of what the budget would look like for us if the mill rate was 28, what it would look like for us if it was 29, how much on average cost it would be to each citizen, because I'll tell you right now, I don't want her getting days taken away from her, I don't want programs getting taken away from my kids, I don't want teachers being fired, I want to send my kid to Woodstock Academy or wherever you want to send him to, and say, oh, the top-right kid is from Brooklyn. We're talking about, we always talk about how we're gonna solve this and what the problem is, but we're not talking about why, why we want to do this. The why we want to do this is quite simply, you can either have all these programs and stuff keep your kids busy, or you can have the streets keep your kids busy and then take that money out of your pocket, they're your choice. Right, if you know the kids that I work with, I have 21-year-olds that I work with right now that do not know who Ebenezer Scrooge is, and I am not making this up. You laugh, I am not kidding, not one bit. So either, and that's it, you're gonna have to raise the mill rate, it's unpopular. I would suggest doing it now and the January thing, I know, you have to vote on it, but to get these budgets filled, and it would take a huge burden off of them, slight increase now to offset the cost of the budget that's being proposed, and then 2017, 2018, you revisit whatever the mill rate is, and if you have to increase it, that's fine. You want to talk about pay to play, you want to go to a blue ribbon school system, who we pay for? And that's it, and that way we all share the burden, not just them, why do the teachers gotta get hammered? Think about the morale. Everybody have a bad day at work before, you go to work and you try to find a happy day? Have somebody go to work who just, their buddy just lost their job and now they gotta teach four extra students and they're going, all right, let's do this. Yes, I know they're, they're not on the chopping block, but they could be, they could be, because the budget's gotta get fixed now. This is a band-aid for, so I'm recommending the mill rate be increased, I represent nobody, no affiliation, I don't even live in this town right here, I'm on my kids' fault by the best and I'm willing to pay for it, so.
I just want to say, please make sure you attend whatever meeting is scheduled. I've been at meetings before.
I said it, don't, don't need a master career, be nice and think of this stuff.
I support your position, you're at the wrong place at the wrong time.
AJ, you got a comment?
Yeah, um, AJ Kerwood again, um, it was just the three lines, 16, 17, 18, so when those go to anything, or if you have to present again or go over, and I would just consider, uh, ask that it be considered that, that's just as clear and transparent as possible because there's two lines that look identical, but somehow they're different, and then there's a half of, it looks like half of 16 also is town in Brooklyn, so just those whole funds, just a better description of that, um, and then add to that whatever has to be carried over from the 16, 17 budget uncovered by the town, so we can get one, one number that we're looking for, um, instead of four. And the other thing was just about designated schools, I know it's kicked around, I know a lot of people are excited about having a conversation, I can't tell you, I, I mean, obviously I cover a much larger area, but when someone's looking in Brooklyn, one of the first things they talk about is having choice, first things they talk about, especially if they have high school age kids. So I would caution you all against whatever group is going to be the one tasked with picking a winner or a loser and how you're gonna do that, not all kids are the same, we've all said it many times, one kid might be so excited about going to Voag at Killenley and another, would, would, they would never be at that school, they want to go to NFA for art. So who is going to make that decision of picking the winner or loser, how you're gonna make that decision? I think unless that's ironed out well ahead of time, I would caution this board from ever eliminating that choice from the people who moved to Brooklyn for that choice.
We've been there before and that decision has been made before, so, yeah. I'm onto your trousers.
My name's Mike, I'm just, I'm curious more about the actual ramifications of that, you know, why you go to one, obviously there's some cost savings, but I'm curious about the details. So if I can just understand the details.
Speaking now for our role piece, at least for today. Okay.
About mechanics and how we do this with town meetings, because if it is really important that we have it in December, it sort of has to be, it only has to be the 21st, um, because of what it's gonna take for you to get the MOU, and then we have a certain amount of days that has to be, call has to be posted, so does everybody think that's realistic? Because I'm not sure, we're, we're, we will try, but we're getting tight. But I do think you have to have it in December.
Can we bump your board finance?
Come to any of our meetings if you'd like.
No, I'm just.
The taxpayers can't.
Isn't it board finance? No, wait, it's the wrong thing. Oh, it's the same.
I think Rick has a good point, I mean, it's conceivable you could try to have the town meeting between Christmas and New Year's, but I just don't think you get a representative population if you schedule events, so. It gives a, it gives a couple of weeks to, uh, get through all of the negotiations with the various employee, um, organizations and to make your final decisions. Or be possible.
So on, are we, are we gonna do it again, or are we gonna leave the 21,000 coming out there, are we gonna have that ready for the meeting?
I'm sure that number's already changed while you're kind of sitting here. Although I think, you know, I can just monitor that, I think we're making a big decision, so there's a lot of work that needs to get done between now and then, I think even if, you know, coming up with 300,000 in, in January is, is, is different than 21,000, so I think we'll be okay to hold off.
And again, the, the non-certifies just got their incentive, their early incentive, retirement incentive today to be able to look at, and the teachers, and they, they sell on that through this, this entire calendar week, so, so ultimately, they're potentially.
We don't have to meet to, to resolve that before the town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the one. So December 21st is when we're going to do the town meeting?
We, we don't, we don't set the town meeting.
Right.
Or the selectmen.
That's, that's what we're thinking, right? If that works for you.
So if that, if that is the board's selectmen to, um, we, we have wanted to give Patty the go-ahead on, on the reductions that we have right now and, so what you need to do on your side to.
Can't be done till the board of finance decides what you're doing.
When is that meeting?
Third Wednesday.
It means 20.
The day before.
The day before.
Maybe we'll have a special.
Yeah.
All right, so we will wait for, for Jeff and the board of finance to work out their details so they can tell the board's selectmen, so the board's selectmen can, the management organization will say that, yes, it's definitely broken up best. Okay, so, so basically what we need to do, um, is just for the public's purposes, is on, at a town meeting, we are, the board of education has to go through the board of finance to the, the town to ask for some of this money. So some of the money that we are pulling out of the teacher, that was set aside for the teacher retirements and then also the $130,000 additionally that we're asking for, that ultimately has to come from the town leaders, it has to be voted on at a town meeting. So this is, you know, we appreciate all of your presence here, but there's going to be renewed presence requested at that point in time because that is what gets us to our bottom line number at this point in time. If for some reason those talks go sideways and, and there's more discussion, things like that, then this list may need to be reevaluated and re-looked at and maybe even better.
Yeah, in the past at town meetings, there have been townspeople that have been very vocal about the lack of a reserve, and this hits the reserve about half of what we have, maybe more. So, you know, I, I believe in it and this is what I feel a reserve is for, but we need the people that believe in that to come out for this meeting in order for this to get passed, because if we lose $530,000, you see the couple of cuts that we had to make here today, that we have to go back to the two pages worth of cuts and find 530,000, Brooklyn School will be a very different place. Motion to adjourn.
Do you want to make the motion to adjourn? 20 seconds, all in favor?